Regular meeting number six will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Councilmember Harden, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, our God your God, and in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Dr. Susan K. Smith, welcome back to council. Dr. Smith, if you could please lead us in prayer.
Spirit of the living God, you who saw fit to bring us to this day, to bring us through last week, to bring us to this day where we breathe and walk and see, and have brought these lawmakers into this chamber to do this very special work of working for the people, come by here now and bless their work. Remind them, oh Lord God, of the people who need them, people who don't even know how much they need them sometimes, remind them of that. And remind them, oh Lord God, that even while we get caught up in presidential politics, it is the people on the local level who make the biggest difference for all of us as individuals. So come by here and bless them. Bless them, Lord God, so that they can do the work that you have called them all to do, and we ask this in the name of all of God's people and all of God's children, that those people say, "Amen."
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda, be published in the city board. Are there any other communications to be read in the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
Yes, I have some announcements, President Klein. The City of Columbus's annual Black History Month celebration is Saturday, February 13th, from 1:00 to 2:30 PM at the King Arts Complex. This year's theme is "Make a Joyful Noise." It's a celebration of gospel music. The event is free and open to the public. I want to thank Director Brandon and her staff, who are working hard on this event. I also want to acknowledge that the Columbus City School District School Choice Fair for elementary and middle schools is coming up on Thursday, February 11th. The fair provides the opportunity for parents and students to meet school administrators and discover the various curriculum, athletic, and activity offerings of schools throughout the district, and that will take place at East High School. I also want to acknowledge that the Latino-American Space for Enrichment is holding a FAFSA workshop for Latino high school students this Wednesday, February 3rd, at 6:00 PM in Enerson Hall, Room 311, on OSU campus. There will be bilingual scholarship and financial aid specialists on hand to help students fill out the FAFSA in Spanish and English. Students and parents are welcome and may RSVP at go.OSU.edu/fafsa. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown?
Two announcements. I would like to congratulate our Division of Police for being featured on the nationally televised PBS NewsHour for their outstanding training on de-escalation tactics, racial bias, and lethal force. To report hail Columbus as a national leader in training with the purpose of reducing the number of officer-involved shootings and increasing officer safety. I'd like to ask Director Speaks if he'd have to make some comments.
Thank you, President Klein, Chairman Brown, members of council. We are honored to be highlighted, nationally highlighted, for our training. PBS pointed out that the national average is just 15 weeks or about 600 hours to become a law enforcement officer throughout the country. Here in Columbus, I am proud to say we are almost double those hours that our cadets receive. In addition, the field training after one graduates from our academy is also intensive, four four-week periods followed by another week period of review, so almost an entire year before those officers are able to practice by themselves. And lastly, once you become, after your probationary period ends, once you become an officer, we take great strides in continuing the training process. And as you know, last year, we implemented mandatory training, both in terms of bias, the Kerwin Institute did training implicit bias, and we will continue that training each and every year. And likewise, with respect to use of force, we will annually engage in de-escalation training. So very privileged to be highlighted nationally. Thank you.
Also, President Klein, as a councilmember and on behalf of my colleagues, I would like to extend my condolences and to ask for the Columbus community to provide support and prayers to the members of the Carmategum Choling Buddhist Temple in Franklinton. The temple was destroyed Sunday, as you know, in a morning fire. I also ask Director Speaks if he has any comments about the circumstances.
I would like to note two things. First, as Councilmember Stenziano noted last week, we have gone through great strides to educate the Franklinton area and to pass out smoke alarms throughout that area. Secondly, our fire investigators continue to investigate several suspicious fires this weekend, including the one at the temple. I would ask anyone with information on these fires or any other fires, please contact our fire investigators at number 614-645-3011. So any suspicious activities with respect to fires, 614-645-3011. Thank you.
And one last thing. Tonight, we're going to be addressing the retirement of one of our officers within our fire division who happens to be four-legged.
Yep.
I'd like to acknowledge that right now, he's out in the hallway. He's not doing very well in this particular environment, but we'll speak to the issue at the proper time, but wanted you to be aware that he is present.
Councilmember Brown, because of that, do you want to go ahead and maybe talk and make any notes and have that presentation done now, and then once we get to your portion of safety, you can go ahead and read it and be more of a formality, but any sort of acknowledgement? Do you want to do that right now?
That'd be perfectly fine. Thank you.
Please.
If we could, we'd like to have Captain Jason Bender and Firefighter Richard Harding and Marley, please approach the podium.
You can bring Marley up if you want. Whatever you think's best for Marley. Feel free to bring Marley up, or Marley's fine down there.
Well, Council President, I'd like to have Captain Jason Bender make a few comments, Firefighter Richard Harding to make a few comments, and Marley will close it out.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wasn't aware I was going to, but this is Explosive Detection Canine Marley, who has served the citizens of Columbus for nine and a half years. He's worked countless football games, many homeland security details. He's protected everybody from pulpers to presidents, and we appreciate the opportunity for him to retire in the fashion that we've been afforded. Thank you. This is firefighter Harding.
I would just like to also thank everybody from the top down, including the director, council, the fire administration, the director again, and our fire chief for allowing us to have the opportunity that we don't end up like a Marietta. So with that being said, it's fantastic.
Is it okay if we applaud for Marley, or Marley freak out?
He'll freak out, but that's all right.
All right. Thank you.
This is great for our family, to allow him to retire and go spend the rest of his life hanging out and chasing the cat, so.
As long as there are no bombs around, he's perfectly okay, President. So thank you very, very much. I think it's important for everyone to appreciate the fact, the hard work they do, all the different special events, and how they're able to make sure that we all stay safe. And Marley's done a superb job. Again, Marley's not going to speak now, but we'll deal with it at a later time. But thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Council President. That's all I have.
Sure. Councilmember Harden?
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, I bring forward Resolution 24X-2015, which would designate February 7th, 2016, as National Black HIV and AIDS Awareness Day in Columbus. I would like to invite Audrey Regan from Columbus Public Health, Andrew Dello from the Greater Columbus Empowerment Center, and Adrian Neil Hobson from AIDS Resource Center to the podium. I'd like to certainly thank, I introduced this as a co-sponsor with Council President Pro Tem Tyson, but come forward, actually, everybody who came along, I would have come up and support. This is very important to Columbus community because African-Americans are the racial group affected the highest rate of HIV. Forty-four percent of all infected persons in Franklin County are African-American, despite being only 28% of the general population. I believe in an AIDS-free generation, but I know that it will not come easily without extraordinary effort. We have to use this day of awareness and other opportunities to call on individuals to get tested regularly, to preach to their friends and their families to get tested, and to practice safe sex, and also to explore preventative measures like the PrEP pill. Our churches, our social groups, clubs, fraternities, sororities, all of us can come together to publicize the fact that African-American community is at particular risk of using and singing about this, the best practices in preventing the spread of HIV and AIDS. Lastly, from the societal perspective, I'd like to encourage all people to get health care through the expansion of health care, through the Medicaid and the marketplace. We have a big fight ahead of us, but because of the work of the folks that are here, because of the work of our leadership of President Pro Tem and the Health and Human Services and our Health Department in Columbus, we're on our way. Are there any comments, especially from President Pro Tem Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. I'm very excited that we have this resolution this evening, not excited about the point that we have so many individuals of color that are now continuing to contract HIV and AIDS. We know that blacks are three times more likely to be newly diagnosed with HIV, and certainly almost two times likely to be dealing with HIV and AIDS. And certainly, we need to, I'm excited to see the people sitting in this room, because we need to make sure that we're reaching out to people of color, so that they certainly will be able to, as you said, use the PrEP, as well as to have individuals that look like them to be able to help them, to be able to get the services that they need. This is really, you know, this is really a minority disparity issue. We have got to be able to share with this community how to prevent getting HIV and AIDS, and should they get it, they need to be making sure that they're going towards the AIDS Resource Center, using Ohio State, using their physicians to get the care that they need, so that they can live a really healthy and fulfilled life. So I'm looking forward to working with Councilmember Harden and hearing what you're doing as far as outreach in our community, to be able to reach these individuals, so that we can change these numbers, and so that everyone can have an opportunity to live the life that they were created to do. So thank you, Councilmember Harden, and for your, your work on this. I think that you also have an opportunity, which I'm excited about, through your work with My Brothers Keeper, because that's certainly an age group that are, that need to continue to be reinforced in terms of communication as to how not to contract this illness, and should they do, how to get the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, President Pro Tem, and again, thank you for your leadership on this work for many years. Any other comments, questions? If not, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Resolution passed.
Thank you. Ms. Audrey?
Thank you, Council President Klein and Pro Tem, President Pro Tem Tyson, and Councilman Harden, for recognizing the burden that HIV has in our community. I'm Audrey Regan with Columbus Public Health, and 215 people were diagnosed in 2014 with HIV here in Franklin County. And as was mentioned, African-American men and women are disproportionately impacted. But Columbus Public Health is fortunate to have great partnerships with AIDS Resource Center Ohio, AIDS Healthcare Foundation, Nationwide Children's Hospital, FACES Clinic, to assure that people know their HIV status. That is the first step to controlling HIV and managing the disease, which will eventually prevent additional infections. Columbus Public Health and our partners conduct HIV and STI screening at our Health Department, as well as community locations. And for National Black HIV Awareness Day on February 7th, we will be working with our partners to provide testing the entire week, at Neighborhood House on Monday, February 8th, at GCMC on Tuesday, February 9th, and at Ohio State Multicultural Center on Thursday, February 11th. And all that information is available, the details, on Columbus Public Health website. Columbus Public Health also promotes PrEP, which was already mentioned, which is the pre-exposure prophylaxis. This is a pill that can be taken once a day to prevent your risk of contracting HIV by about 92%. It's a significant advancement in HIV prevention, and we're happy to have resources here in Columbus where people can access this. So we appreciate your support in fighting HIV and increasing people's awareness of HIV and the importance of PrEP and knowing their status. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Audrey. Andrew, would you come up and tell folks about the good work that GCMC is doing and out in the community? I've had the opportunity to come out and come to a Friday evening session with you and the guys, the young folks at the event.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Harden, and President Klein and city council members for this recognition. I'm the program supervisor at the Greater Columbus Empowerment Center, which is a center here in Columbus that works with young men who have sex with men of color, ages 13 to 29, to ultimately help them live a healthier life. We do HIV testing, we do skill building, from anywhere, from job searches to communication skills, to really help them make a difference in the community. I'd like to thank my staff, Dewan Stevens, Ryan Hare, and Tyree Sanders, Isaiah Taylor, for their efforts at GCMC to really help make an impact in this community. Thank you.
And Mr. Adrian Neil Hobson?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for being behind something that's very important. My name is Adrian Neil Jr. I'm a program manager for the Ohio AIDS Coalition, and within our organization, we focus on public policy as it relates to HIV, as well as programming advocacy. We do various programs like AIDS Watch Ohio that we will be doing in May, where we allow different, or not different, but HIV-positive Ohioans to come to Columbus, be able to talk with legislators and things of that nature, to be able to advocate not only for themselves, but their communities as it relates to HIV. We also do programs like the Nuclearship Summit that will be taking place this February 19th through the 21st. It's a summit that will focus on governmental structure, HIV criminalization, and just leadership activities that will be able to empower them to advocate for themselves and their communities. As many of you know, African-Americans are disproportionately affected as it relates to not only HIV, but other things such as socioeconomic status and things of that nature. In order for us to really get to an AIDS-free generation, we have to start accessing or destroying those barriers that prevent them, such as homelessness, survival sex, and things of that nature. So I not only want to thank you all, but the various partners that we have here in Columbus, Columbus Black Health, Greater Columbus Empowerment Center, AIDS Healthcare Foundation, and different things of that nature, who really support the work that we're doing within Columbus, Ohio. So thank you.
And thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Klein. Thank you, Councilmember Harden, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, I bring forward Resolution 0026X-2016. I'd like to ask Vice President Shom Rajadaksha to come forward from DLZ Architecture and approach the podium, where I make some brief comments. It's my distinct honor to welcome and congratulate DLZ Corporation on their 100th anniversary, 75 of which have been located here in Columbus. And as someone that's been here for about 32 days, I can appreciate that history, being here in terms of city council. DLZ is one of the top consulting firms in the architectural, engineering, and surveying industry, supported by almost 600 employees and over 20 offices across the country. The firm is ranked by Engineering News Record as one of the top 150 in the U.S., and the 10th largest in the Midwestern United States. DLZ has demonstrated their commitment to the City of Columbus through their community service and professionalism. As the chairman of DLZ likes to point out, 80% of their business comes from former clients who want to work with DLZ again. I'm truly honored to be able to recognize 100 years, and congratulations, and look forward to your continued success in the next 100 years. With that, President, council, I'd like to know if any comments from other colleagues? Okay. Since I don't see any other comments, I'll know if you have any, Shom.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Michael. Thank you so much. On behalf of the 150 staff of DLZ in our Columbus office and 600 nationwide, we are very proud to call Columbus home and to design some of the leading landmarks in the city, such as Main Street Bridge and the International Gateway at Port Columbus Airport. We sincerely appreciate the effort city council and the mayor's office do to make Columbus the best place in the country to locate and grow a business, and DLZ is a testament to your leadership and the city's leadership. So thank you very much for everything you do. Appreciate those comments. If there are no questions, I move for adoption of the resolution.
Before I move, I do want to make a comment. I apologize that I opened up the floor, but I want to thank DLZ and the Rajadaksha family for all the work that you've done, not just as an employer in the community, but also as a community partner. There are very few activities of the global scale that we tackle in the city of Columbus that doesn't have the DLZ imprimatur on it. So the philanthropic work, the expertise that you loaned the community, we're grateful for that, and we look forward to the next 100 years.
We're proud to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Resolution adopted.
Thank you.
I'm going to come and hand this to you. Mr. President, that is all I have at this time.
Thank you, sir. President Pro Tem Tyson?
Thank you, President Klein, and I'm going to ask Tina Bowers and all the women with her from the American Heart Association to come towards the podium. This is Resolution 0027X-2016. It is to declare February 6th of 2016 as Wear Red Day in Columbus, and to raise awareness of cardiovascular disease as the leading cause of death among women. Whereas heart disease is the number-one killer of women, yet 80% of cardiac events can be prevented. Whereas cardiovascular diseases cause one in three women's deaths each year, killing approximately one woman every minute, one woman every minute. Whereas 90% of women have one or more risk factors for developing heart disease, yet only one in five American women believe that heart disease is her greatest health risk. Whereas since 1984, more women than men have died each year from heart disease, whereas women are less likely to call 911 for themselves when experiencing symptoms of a heart attack than they are if someone else was having a heart attack. Whereas only 43% of African-American women, 44% of Hispanic women, know that heart disease is their greatest risk, compared with 60% of Caucasian women. Whereas women involved with the American Heart Association's Go Red for Women movement, live healthier lives, nearly 90% have made at least one healthy behavior change. And be it resolved by the council of the City of Columbus, that this council recognizes the importance of the ongoing fight against heart disease and stroke, and does hereby declare February 6th of 2016 as Wear Red Day in Columbus. Be it further resolved that this council urges Columbus residents to wear red in recognition of family, friends, and neighbors who have suffered from heart disease, and as a show of support for women and cardiovascular health. I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Resolution adopted.
Thank you. As you can see, my, our colleagues, a lot of our staff are all wearing red today in support of the work that you're doing at the American Heart Association. And so with that, I'm going to say, the floor is yours, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, Council President Klein, and all members of council. As a dedicated volunteer and American Heart Association Young Professional Board Member, I'm thrilled to see council helping call attention to the number-one killer of women, heart disease, by supporting Go Red for Women again this year. The Go Red campaign means so much to me personally, because not only do I have a family history of heart disease, I myself am a heart patient. I was born with a heart defect that I never knew about until I had a screening with my favorite echocardiographer, my sister Natalie. If it wasn't for her and the doctor finding this diagnosis, I would have never known I was living with a congenital heart defect. My prognosis means that I will likely need heart surgery in the future. Fundraising for research, technology, and advocating are my why. My future is why I go red. Since the inception of Go Red, we have been collectively fighting this disease. I am proud to say that together, we have saved the lives of more than 627,000 women. But the fight is far from over. One in three women still die from cardiovascular diseases and stroke. And the truth of the matter is, 80% of us are, the cardiac events are preventable if we're making the right choices. Go red is a great place to start. Research shows women who go red are more likely to make healthy choices. It's easy to go red. G, get your numbers. Ask your doctor to check your blood pressure, cholesterol, and glucose. O, own your lifestyle. Stop smoking, lose weight, be physically active, and eat healthy. R, raise your voice. Advocate for more women-related research and education. E, educate your family. Make healthy food choices for you and your family. Teach your loved ones the importance of staying active. And finally, D, donate. Show your support with a donation of time or money. I offer my most heartfelt appreciation to you, Councilmember Tyson, and the entire council for your support in creating a visual display throughout Columbus to help the American Heart Association further the efforts in stopping the number-one killer of women. Your support is truly invaluable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any quick comments for my councilmembers? Thank you.
Thanks.
I do have one resolution myself tonight, and this is about my fourth meeting as council president, and I've never felt as much pressure as I do now, having a gavel, knowing that we have three esteemed unicourt judges in the room, and the one that we're going to honor right now, who is a complete rock star in the legal community, is Judge Scott Vanderkar. So this is 23X-2016, to congratulate Judge Scott D. Vanderkar on his retirement, countless accomplishments, and his commitment to Franklin County and the Columbus community. I'd like to call up, he's already, geez, man. You're like Batman, on top of it, you're automatically here. I'd like to move for passage.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I mean, there's all these great accomplishments here, but 20 years on the bench, 15 years as an assistant prosecuting attorney, but really, I think what you've done, Judge Vanderkar, through your specialty dockets with the drug court and your focus on opiate addiction, is exactly what we need to be doing in this country on criminal justice reform. And you've been a leader, and for far too long, we've just tried to incarcerate our way out of it, not recognizing that there are folks that are sick, that lack opportunity, that need help, and that you've done that, and you've been a model for me and hopefully for the legal community. So thank you for what you've done and all the great things that you're going to do. Good luck, and the floor is yours.
Council President Klein, councilmembers, I feel like saying councilmember Paley, but I'll say Judge Paley, Judge Barrows, they're going to carry on the quest here in Franklin County, but as you pointed out, it's a disease. 2,482 people died in Ohio of overdose in 2014. We have to stop that, and the only, well, it's not the only way to stop it, but one of the ways to stop it is to make sure that other communities have drug courts like we have here in this community now, and that is my goal. And Nancy Sully, the boss back there, sorry, told me to keep it short, but point that out. So that's my short. I can't, I'm not as cute as Marbly, but I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. It's okay to applaud. Go ahead. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Yes, Council President Protem Tyson.
Thank you, President Klein. Judge Vanderkar, just really thank you for the work that you have been doing for the last twenty years at the courthouse. You have made such a tremendous difference in people's lives by understanding what the real issues happen to be, what sent them to the criminal justice system, and figuring out how to make a difference in their lives and helping them to be able to go back to their families and help their families to be better. So I just commend you for the work that you have done. You have been courageous in your work and helping to change people's lives, put on earth to change, help to change people's lives and make them better, and you have certainly done that. So I look forward to this next chapter that you're in and to be able to help more people, not only in the state of Ohio, but throughout this country, in regards to helping them to move forward and not using drugs, not using alcohol, not being involved in this criminal justice system, because that is the core reason most, especially most women. Most women go to jail because of a substance abuse issue. And so, and when they go to jail, their families are harmed, most of them have children, and their families are harmed. So I thank you for what you've done in the past and what you're getting ready to do. I wish you well in this next phase of your life.
Well, thank you, but we didn't do it by ourselves. We did it with you collaborating with the commissioners, and the two of you funded these programs, continue to fund these programs. That's truly why I turn back to now Judge Paley, because she was up here with you at the beginning when we started all this, and so, thank you.
I do want to recognize our esteemed alum, Judge Eileen Paley. I think we give her a round of applause.
Thank you, Judge Barrows.
Of course, Judge Barrows will have an opportunity to comment here shortly. Any other comments or questions? Before I conclude and hand this resolution to you, I just want to say that you and Judge Herbert have personally inspired me, and I'm grateful for all the work that you do.
Thank you. And he's my best friend, too.
Any comments from our elected officials, Auditor Dorian, City Attorney's Office? Judge Barrows?
Councilmember Klein, only to echo what Judge Vanderkar said, we couldn't do what we do without the assistance of this council, the city, and the county commissioners generously supporting our efforts to turn this into a system of healing. So thank you very much.
Judge Paley, any comments? Okay. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, then we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of thirty-day legislation by the city clerk. Is there a clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. We'll now read into the record ordinances numbers of thirty-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading.
Economic Development Committee ordinance two-four-two dash two thousand and sixteen, Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance one-oh-eight dash two thousand and sixteen, Public Utilities Committee ordinance is thirty-ninety-one, thirty-one-seventy-two, thirty-two-oh-seven dash two thousand and fifteen, and ordinance is four, twenty-two, twenty-six, thirty-nine, forty-three, forty-nine, sixty, sixty-seven, one-oh-two, one-oh-seven, one-thirty-two, and one-seventy dash two thousand and sixteen. Zoning Committee ordinance is two-one-five, two-one-six, two-twenty-four, and two-seventy-seven dash two thousand and sixteen.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance number of each into the record?
Resolution twenty-five X dash two thousand and sixteen, Finance Committee ordinance is fifty-one, one-sixteen, and one-forty-four dash two thousand and sixteen, Public Safety Committee ordinance is ninety-seven, and one-oh-one dash two thousand and sixteen, Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution fourteen X dash two thousand and sixteen, ordinance one-twenty-seven dash two thousand and sixteen, Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and one-twenty-five dash two thousand and sixteen, Housing Committee ordinance is one-forty-nine, one-fifty, one-fifty-one, one-seventy-six dash two thousand and sixteen, Public Utilities Committee ordinance is twenty-eight-eight-five, thirty-seventy-nine, thirty-one-seventy-three, thirty-one-eighty-three, thirty-one-ninety-eight, thirty-two-oh-two, thirty-two-oh-six dash two thousand and fifteen, and ordinance is three, twelve, seventeen, twenty, twenty-five, forty-two, eighty, one-thirteen, one-thirty-six, and one-sixty-six dash two thousand and sixteen.
We do have one speaker slip on today's consent agenda. It's Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, if you could come forward. Looks like you're speaking in favor of ordinance one-fifty dash two thousand and sixteen. If you could just state, you know the drill, Mr. Wilkins.
Sixteen-twelve, sixteen-twelve Arlington Avenue. Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of Minnesota vacant and amendment property in the northern area. I just would like to know what's going to be done with seventeen forty-seven East Twenty-Fifth Avenue. I just want to know how long it has been in the land bank and what will this property be used for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any questions or comments from Mr. Wilkins? Just ask the development department to maybe fill in Mr. Wilkins, maybe during the break or after the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments on the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, clerk call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
President Klein.
Yes. Consent agenda passed. We'll now proceed with the second reading of thirty-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. President Protem Tyson chairs that committee. President Protem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President. The first ordinance I have is ordinance number twenty-eight-eighty-seven dash two thousand and fifteen. I first would like to take from the table.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. This ordinance is to make appropriations for twelve months ending December thirty-first of two thousand and sixteen for each of the several object level ones for which the city of Columbus has to provide, from the monies known to be in the treasury of said city of Columbus and in the fund known as the general fund during the said twelve months from the collection of all taxes and from all other sources of revenue, the amount of eight-hundred-and-thirty-four million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars, and to declare an emergency. For this ordinance, I'm also asking for consideration of an amendment for the two thousand and sixteen operating budget for our city. As a result of a final financial activity in two thousand and fifteen, the available resources for the city's budget are now estimated at eight-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-one, two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars, an increase of five-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars from the originally estimated eight-hundred-and-thirty-four million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. This ordinance, as amended, increases the mayor's projected budget by the five-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars, as previously stated in the initial proposal. We have, as council, we have contemplated budget amendments and the additional budget resources that were identified by the auditor at the beginning of January. Council agreed to make a fiscally responsible decision and amend the budget to set aside the additional resources in the already established council funds dedicated to public safety, jobs, and neighborhood services. The purpose of amending the budget ordinance to stay is to distribute the fund, the available funds and of the carryover of five-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars to the council funds. As it was decided how much to put into each fund, the consideration was given to how much was already available in those funds, and the intent of the deposits being made into the funds is to ensure that all funds have similar cash balances. And so, for the deposit from the carryover would be two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars for an anticipated balance of three-hundred-thousand dollars in the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund and the Public Safety Initiatives Fund. The deposit carryover was one-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-eight dollars, and we're going to bring that fund to three-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. In terms of the Job Growth Fund, the deposit from the carryover was one-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-eight dollars, which will bring that deposit to two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. By setting aside the additional available resources for neighborhood services, public safety, and job creation efforts, council will be better prepared for any unforeseen financial challenges. And so with that, I'm going to now ask that we will amend as submitted to the clerk.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Ordinance is amended.
Thank you. I'd like to table it for one week.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation tabled for one week.
Thank you. The next ordinance is zero-one-nine-zero dash two thousand and sixteen, is to appropriate and authorize the city auditor to transfer seven million, six-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and sixty-five cents from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority Fund for the purpose of providing secondary funding in the event that the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority cannot meet its debt obligations, and to appropriate and expend up to seven million, forty thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and fifty cents within the Special Income Tax Fund for the reimbursement to the River South Authority and to make lease payments and to declare an emergency. This is an annual ordinance that we pass every year. The appropriation and transfer of the seven million, six-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and sixty-five cents from the Special Revenue Tax Fund provides the backing as stipulated in the city's lease agreement with the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority. The actual transfer of these funds will only occur if the CFA is unable to meet its debt obligations as outlined in the lease with the city. The city provides fifty percent of this backing, while Franklin County is responsible for the other fifty percent. Since nineteen ninety, no such payments have been needed nor are anticipated. And so the legislation then for the River South, Auditor Dorian, do you want to make any comments on that legislation?
Thank you, Chairperson Tyson and all council members. That second piece of the ordinance, the seven million, forty thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, is a result of an agreement struck between the city and the River South Authority approximately twenty years ago. That payment will continue annually. It will in fact be made annually through the year two thousand and twenty-four. In the year two thousand and twenty-five, it will drop to about half that amount, and then it will cease. When you see that piece of money and think of the payments throughout two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five, those monies represent the Lazarus Building. So in order to keep faith with all of the agreements struck by your predecessors, I recommend the adoption of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorian. Any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number zero-two-three-four dash two thousand and sixteen, and I want to authorize the issuance, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-ten million, three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of providing funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds for the city. And let Mr. Dorian address this ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson Tyson and all council members. As many of you know, when I come to you with a bond ordinance for refunding of bonds, I'm always seeking a not-to-exceed number. So this is the outside number that we would be refunding. My present thought is that we won't reach that number, that will be quite frankly considerably less than that, driven by the market conditions. This amount of money represents bonds voted by the public. We call them unlimited tax bonds, and we're simply seeking lower interest rates. I fully anticipate a substantial savings in the transaction of, let me just say, since you never know until you do the deed, but we're looking at a few million dollars of savings. If I may, I'd speak to the second ordinance, two-thirty-five, exactly the same conditions, except these monies represent councilman-y debt, debt issued under the authority of the council, not necessarily voted by the public. Again, will save money. The bottom line on these kinds of refunding ordinances, if we do not save money, we simply do not do the refunding. So I ask for and recommend the adoption of ordinances two-thirty-four and two-thirty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Dorian, and I know the anticipated sale date is February the eleventh. Is that correct?
February the eleventh is our anticipated sale date.
Thank you. And we look forward to hearing the, certainly I know tomorrow you're going to be talking with all of the, our credit agencies, and look forward to hopefully continuing getting our AAA credit bonding as we get ready to sell these on the market. So thank you. So with that, I'm going to want, on ordinance zero-two-three-four dash two thousand and sixteen, I want to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Ordinance is amended.
Thank you. And a waived second reading.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Clerk, clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And the next ordinance is ordinance number zero-two-three-five dash two thousand and sixteen, and it is to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed forty-eight million for the purpose of providing funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city. And Mr. Dorian has already addressed this particular ordinance, and so I would ask my council members to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation amended.
Thank you. And a waived second reading.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And lastly, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. The next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Brown chairs that committee. Chairperson Brown, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Administration Committee, we have ordinance number one-twenty dash two thousand and sixteen to amend the Management Compensation Plan, ordinance number twenty-seven thirteen dash two thousand and thirteen, as amended by enacting section five E dash E one-seven-five, the Classification of Employee Benefits Risk Management Supervisor, by amending section five E dash E two-oh-three, the Classification of Equal Business Opportunity Commission Executive Director, by amending section five C, by amending section five E, by repealing existing section five E dash E two-oh-three, the Classification of Equal Business Opportunity Commission Executive Director, by repealing existing section five C regarding the CMAG slash CWA bargaining unit name, by repealing existing section five E, I'm sorry, I said that all twice. I apologize for that. These deal with adding, changing a classification in IBACO, adding support to our HR department so that they can continue to function at a high level, and essentially cleaning up language to rename CMAG to CWA Local Forty-five-O-two. Are there any questions about any of that? Okay. I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
That is all I have, President Klein.
Thank you, Chairperson Brown. Our next committee is Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Public Safety Committee, to ordinance number zero-one-zero-five dash two-zero-one-six to authorize Director Finance and Management Director to sell to firefighter Richard Harding for the sum of one dollar at Bomb Squad K-9 with the registered name Marley, which has no further value to the Division of Fire and to waive the provisions of the Columbus City Codes, sale of city-owned property. And I, if there are no questions, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
Also, I have zero-one-two-four dash two-zero-one-six to authorize Director Director of Public Safety to modify the existing contract with Cronis Inc. for the Division of Fire for the purchase of software, maintenance support for the telestaff, automated staffing software, and web staff services, to authorize the expenditure of one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents from the general fund and to declare emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
President Klein, that's all we have in Public Safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson Brown. Next committee is the Public Utilities Committee. Councilmember Stenziano chairs that committee. Councilmember?
Thank you, President Klein. And tonight in Public Utilities, we have ordinance thirty-two-oh-four dash two thousand and fifteen to authorize the Director And tonight in Public Utilities, we have ordinance 3204-2015, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish blanket purchase orders from a universal term contract for the rental of construction equipment with operator, with Trefco Construction, Inc. for the Division of Sewage and Drainage and Division of Water, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,820,000 from the Sewage Operating Fund and $75,000 from the Water Operating Fund. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Before I do the next three pieces, I wanted to share with our colleagues that all three will deal with the Division of Water, as the city of Columbus continues to invest in the infrastructure that provides clean drinking water to local families. It's important for us to remember that many of these projects were started a number of years ago and have and will continue to require a series of planned contract modifications to complete. Each project will provide systems that will provide safe water to homes and businesses as well as clean water back into the environment. And with that, I'd like to then read ordinance 0011-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with CH2M Hill Engineers, Inc. for the Dublin Road Water Plant Treatment Capacity Increase Project, for the Division of Water to authorize an expenditure up to $3 million within the Water Go Bond Fund and to authorize an amendment to the 2015 capital improvements budget. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. And next is ordinance 0013-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with Shelley and Sands, Inc. for the Deering Avenue Area Water Line Improvements Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $3,029,899.42 from the Water Systems Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $3,029,899.42 within the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund for the Division of Water, and to amend the 2015 capital improvements budget. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
And finally, I've got ordinance 0014-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with Birch Hydro, Inc. for the HAP-Creamian Water Plant, otherwise known as HCWP Lagoon, a number-one sludge removal, 2015 project in the amount of $1,584,206.66, to authorize a transfer in expenditure up to $1,584,206.66 within the Water Go Bond Fund for the Division of Water, and authorize an amendment to the 2015 capital improvements budget. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
That is all I have in Public Utilities this evening, President Klein.
Thank you, Chairperson Stenziano. Any other business to come before council? Seeing none, we will adjourn and take non-agenda items momentarily. We do not have zoning, so this will be the conclusion of our meeting following the non-agenda items. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned.